All right, it's 6:00 PM. Welcome, everyone, to August 21st Board of Education meeting. If everyone can please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start with Administrator's report.
The agenda was posted at the Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School via email, the town of Three Lakes, town of Monaco, town of Sugar Camp and the Demmer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and media notified by mail was WACD, WATK Radio.
Thank you. Amendments?
There are no amendments to the agenda.
When ready, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. We move into approvals. Has ever anyone had a chance to review or any concerns regarding the minutes of the July 17th regular meeting? If none, I will take a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes for the July 17th meeting.
Motion by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move into Treasurer's report.
I'll make that motion to approve the checks dated July 10th, 2024, through August 14th, 2024, for accounts payable checks number 24250002 and number 24250006, regular checks number 129936, number 130011, and manual checks number 5718, number 5734, in the amount of $471,578.6. And ACH payroll checks number 900043401 and number 900043518, and manual payroll checks number 1819, number 1886, with wanted checks number 1819 and number 1886 in the amount of $206,288.73 for a total amount of $677,000, or excuse me, $677,859.59.
We have a motion by Mitch on the Treasurer's report, second by Michelle.
I guess just a friendly adjustment to that. The payable checks 24250002, there's four zeros in there now. 24250006.
Two zeros.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move into public comments. Are there any comments from visitors regarding any of the posted agenda items?
I know I'm not on the agenda, but I do have a positive opportunity for the school district. I could tag on to why aye. It's just that we thought to maybe that I'd like the district to be aware of.
Is that something that you can provide since it's not on the agenda that I can review?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Is that something that you can provide? Is that what you provided before the meeting?
Uh, no, no.
Okay.
And I understand if you can add it.
Okay. If you can provide me with the information, then we can get you on the agenda. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Is that okay?
No, that's fine, Ken.
Anything else? Next, we move into new business.
This is administrative report.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to skip you. Administrator's report, the annual board staff planning retreat.
And I can make this brief. I just wanted to again say thanks to all those who participated, school board and then our staff, including our principals, teaching staff, community members, and especially our students who joined us. We had a nice group. I think we had 21 or 22 people present. We had a really good representation all the way from the earliest childhood through our, you know, high school planning. And I thought that we were really able to get a lot done with focusing on our long-range plan, looking at our previous goals, noting what we've accomplished so far, and very excited about what I will be putting together and bringing forward to you next month, which is when the plan will be finalized, you'll get to put your eyes on it and review it. And actually, I shouldn't even say finalized. If you want me to bring it back into October for the final final, we can do that. But that is when it's scheduled to come. And I just again felt we had a really very productive day.
If you can express one more thing, because I know we talked to them in the meeting, but moving forward, it came up the potential to have students involved here as well, but their appreciation for the student council and promoting their involvement.
I will make a point of that during our meeting. It was brought up that there could be representation by the student council here present at this board meeting monthly, and that would keep us more connected. I will follow up and pursue that with Mr. Zeus. And I think that's one we can make happen because we have willing participants.
Any other follow-up? Okay, now we'll move on to new business. September meeting dates.
Our regular monthly meeting in September will be on the 18th at 6:00 PM in Three Lakes.
Okay, I will take a motion.
It's a regular meeting.
Oh, sorry. So action. Okay, next we move into consider approval of personnel report and new hires and resignations.
Okay, we have some new hirings. Erin Marvin as the Assistant Student Council Advisor, Marcus Crowell as the Junior High Volleyball Head Coach, Chelsea Blask as the Junior High Paraprofessional, Jackie Hobbykors as a Junior High Paraprofessional, and Lacey Ratlin as a Three Lakes Elementary Paraprofessional.
Based on the, is there any current pending open leading up to the school year start?
We are having our final discussion with a candidate tomorrow. I would say at this point, we don't have any vacancies that aren't addressed. We are ready to go for the start of the school year.
Okay, hearing that, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we move to preliminary review and consider approval of the 2024-2025 budgets.
And I'm going to turn this over to Caleb. Caleb has worked extensively on this. He and I are in close communication. But he's going to present for you our initial numbers and where we think we are at. And open it up there, Caleb.
Sure. So we'll just dive right into this packet then. So to start off, I thought I'd give you just kind of a little bit of an update of where we were at last year. We're far enough in our audit now that I feel comfortable sharing these numbers with you. So in our Fund 10 general fund, which is the vast majority of our spending, you can see there, we ended up with a $430,000 profit there, gain. Being in the first year of a referendum, that's what we wanted to see, that's what we were looking for. So happy with that, and we'll get into that a little bit later. But then Fund 21 is where we house all of our student activities and scholarships. So it's nice to see a little bit of a profit there as well. That means that's healthy. Those scholarship funds are healthy. Our student activity counts are healthy. So everything's looking good there. Fund 27, that's our special education. Fund 27 and Fund 10 are kind of tied at the hip. We're not allowed to run a deficit or a surplus in Fund 27. That money just comes straight out of Fund 10. So really, you can think of Fund 27 and Fund 10 kind of together joint. And when I'm budgeting, it's really those two that I'm kind of working off of. And then 2150 and 80 are not afterthoughts, but are just kind of a little bit separate and different on their own. Fund 50, we've got some problems with food service with a $45,000 deficit. Been talking with Terry. We're aware of the situation and looking at some ways of dealing with this in the future. We've got some things that we're going to explore in the next course of the course of the next year to fix that because running a $45,000 deficit in food service is not what we want to be doing.
Can I, are we going to add something?
Yeah, the good news is, is when you see that minus $45,000, that's not an accurate reflection of where we end up on the balance sheet, meaning we had a healthy fund balance in there that ate up a lot of that. Coming off of COVID, we received all of that federal money, extra federal money where everyone was getting the free lunches. And we were able to put away about $100,000 in a fund balance there. And we've slowly been eating away at that as that federal money has started to dry up. And now for the next 24, 25, you'll see in this budget, we actually do see a little bit of an increase in federal money again. So we're aware of it. We've got some plans. Fund 80, that's our community service. Really, we're funding the fitness center out of that. And new for this year, we've actually moved our middle school sports to Fund 80. So Fund 80 would have the middle school sports. And then Jen West is also a part of Fund 80. But again, a healthy profit there, able to put away some money for any fitness center upgrades that we need to do, have been planning accordingly for that. So that's 23, 24 in a quick nutshell. Again, we're still in the middle of the audit, so these numbers aren't final final, but they're close enough that I feel comfortable presenting. Any questions on 23, 24 before we get into the next? All right, so the assumptions in preparing this 24, 25 budget. Really, the main things are talking about the revenue limit worksheet, which I actually have that included in the packet. We'll discuss that on the next page. But open enrollment, this is kind of one of our important figures here. We always want to be positive with open enrollment. And right now, we do have a five-student positive ratio there with students coming in and out. So we're five more than in coming out. But again, these numbers are changing all the way up until school has started and, you know, longer, change more than we want them to change. Other than that, most of our grant revenues are already set. So those, when you see those in the budget, are pretty accurate. All right, on the next page is that revenue limit worksheet. The cells in red you see there are the things that I can plug in. Everything else, the state automatically populates. There's just a couple of things I want to highlight here. The first is our FTE in Three Lakes has been roughly 500 students for the past, you know, 10 years or so. So I kept with that 500. Sometimes we're a little above, sometimes we're a little bit below. But in projecting that 500, that's an increase in FTE, which means that whole harmless aid that we got last year from a declining enrollment, that's gone. Now, if for whatever reason we would have another declining enrollment if we come in below 494, then we'd see a little bit of that money. But either way, it's not going to be a significant amount. And then the other big piece of this is way at the bottom, kind of in the middle, where you see that $2,565,611,506 number, that's our district property valuations. And they just continue to skyrocket. With Baird's latest projection that they got us, what was the actual number here? It's on the next page. 16.7% is what Baird's estimating for us. And they use the municipal property valuations that they submit, and then they run the calculation for us. So we can get those numbers a little bit earlier than we typically would. This is important because you would take our total levy, divide by that number, and that gives us our mill rate. And our mill rate is down at that bottom right-hand corner. And you can see we're under $4 now. We're at $3.98. Last year, we were at $4.60. So we're losing 62 cents off our mill rate.
It's a little bit more than we predicted, wasn't it?
For what?
For mill rate.
It is.
Yeah.
I would never have believed that we would be in high double digits again on property valuations. I think they said the state average was back down to about 6 or 7%. So we're still bucking that trend up here. And the bad news with it is it's not new construction where we're expanding our tax base. It's our, it's the inflationary increases that all of our property owners are seeing. So the mill rate's going to be going down, but we're not going to see much relief with actual taxes. All right, moving on. So if you want to really look at it, you can see our seven municipalities there. Hiles, Monaco, Peel, Stella, Sugar Camp and Three Lakes. And of course, the two that we have that had the biggest growth are also our two biggest sources of funding there. So you can see how that 16.7% actually comes out there. Okay, so let's get into the actual budget then. In Fund 10 revenues, there's a couple of things that I want to highlight on this long list of revenues. The first is the property taxes. So last year, our levy was about $9.757 million. This year, we're looking at about $9.861. That's increasing because the state, we're in the second year of that state biennial budget where we're still seeing that $325 per people increase in revenue. So we'll have that for this year and then next year. Down in that same top local sources section under open enrollment, we see $647,490. That's a lower number, like gross figure than last year, but it's still a positive ratio again. Because we had 70-something students coming in last year, we've got 69 this year. So it's a little bit decrease in total money. But I think that ratio is still going to be about the same where the expenditure would also be less than. And then the other piece that I wanted to point out was in the federal sources. All of our ESSR money is gone. So there is no more COVID grant money available. That had to all be spent by the end of this year, 2024. So when we total all that up, our revenues this year is $11,879,400. Last year, just for reference, it was $12,232,461. And a lot of that is the ESSR and then with some of that special ed money. So we're looking at about $350,000 less in revenue this year. But again, that was planned. We knew that was coming with ESSR going away. So not a crisis by any means. Looking at Fund 27 revenues, again, I want to point out that Fund 10, Fund 27 kind of joined at the hip here. So you can see most of the money that comes from for special ed is actually coming from our transfer from our general fund. So about $1.248 million there. And then everything else is pretty similar to last year. We do have about $10,000 less in IDEA money. But that was due to, last year, we had a little bit saved up from '22, '23 that carried over that we spent last year. So when I look at last year's allocation, it was around $131,000 or going up $1,000, $132, but in reality, it's about $10,000 less. Any questions on the revenue side? Okay, then let's go into expenditures. So on the Fund 10 side, there's a couple of things that I want to point out. The first would be in the 500 series, those capital objects. That's decreasing quite a bit. There were a couple of big-ticket items that we did last summer, mainly the clock system and all of those bleacher upgrades. And I'm forgetting one other. But we did some pretty big projects last year that would be included in that 500 that we're just not doing this year. So that's a drastic decrease there. On the increase side for those 800s, you can see that that inter-fund transfer is going up. And that's to deal with that deficit that we're going to see again in food service as well as that transfer to special ed. On the Fund 27 side, the few things that I want to highlight here is salaries are increasing quite a bit. I want to remind you guys that that's really driven by student need. So we need to accommodate the students that we need to accommodate. So if we need paras, we need to have paras. So for this year, we're seeing about $121,000 increase in salaries and a little bit increase there with benefits corresponding with that. One thing I do want to say though is in that 300s, you'll see that's going down quite a bit. And that's because we've switched up our transportation a little bit and we actually hired a para to do our transportation. So that's going to save a lot of money in the personal services side, but a little bit in salaries. And then finally, the non-capital objects, those are down compared to last year. Again, last year, we had a couple of big-ticket items. And then due to the salaries and the benefits increasing, we're going to try and just do what we can with what we got for the Fund 27 capital objects, non-capital objects. Then the next two pages just kind of show you how that would look if you would break that out into a pie graph. And really, I do this because it shows you how much of a people business we really are. You know, salary and benefits are a vast majority. In Fund 10, it's 65% of our spending. And then if you go to Fund 27, I want to say it's 90%. Yeah, it's 91%. So again, we're a people business here. Then I included in here the budget format that you're used to seeing at the annual meeting. I don't really need to drag you through all of this because I kind of highlighted what I needed to highlight in those other sections. But if you guys went through this on your own and had any questions about what you're seeing in these sections, I'd be happy to answer any questions you had here. Otherwise, I'll keep on moving. Okay. So then, all said and done, next year, we're looking at around $100,000 surplus. A couple of things I want to point out is I mentioned in Fund 80, we added the middle school sports. So that is a big increase in expenditures there if you compare that to what we did last year. And then Fund 21, where I said we were holding all of our student activity accounts, that wasn't entirely accurate because we kind of had them split between Fund 10 and Fund 21. I'm moving them all into Fund 21 so they're all in the same spot. And now all of that money is coming through the business office, whereas it was in the high school office and some was here. So we really are taking on all those student activity accounts in this office now. So checks are being cut out of here. Money is being received here. Everything's in-house now with Fund 21. But when you look on the revenues and expenditures for Fund 21, again, looking at another tidy little surplus there. Fund 27, again, can't run a deficit in there, so that just evens out with that transfer. Fund 50, again, we're not allowed to run a deficit in Fund 50, so we've got a transfer built into there, which you saw on the other page, around $1.3 million, split between Fund 27 and Fund 50. And then again, Fund 80, we've got our middle school sports in there so that those expenditures are a lot higher than what you've seen in past years. Now, when you take that $98,000 surplus in Fund 10, if you remember back to when we were talking referendum, that's less than what we were projecting for a year or two. While it's less, we're doing the things that we said we were going to do with that money. We're doing all of these projects that we can kind of knock out. So again, over the last couple of years, you know, we did some gym floor stuff. We did the bleachers. We did the paging clock system. We're getting new cubbies at Sugar Camp. We've got some security upgrades that we've done. We are going to do all the floor grinding. We purchased a floor grinder to do the floor grinding on the nice floors and get those refinished. So while that surplus isn't, you know, what we had projected or told, the money's there. We're just putting it to the uses that we said we were going to put it. And in talking about that, I'll add that I have $88,000 worth of a new boiler budgeted into this year that we were thinking possibly would be purchased next year for $166. So I budgeted half of it for this year. We've got Dave here to discuss that and I think two more items. So I'll let him talk about that. He's got a much better hold on that. So again, if you took out that 88, you know, add that to the 98, and we've got a more closer surplus to what we had projected. And then at the bottom there, you can see that mill rate again. Last year, 4.6. This year, 3.98. Which there's not many districts in the state that are going to be able to say they're under 4 for a mill rate. I would guess it would be a handful. That's what I've got for you. And then at the end, I've just got some definitions for some of those codes. I know those can get confusing. Do we have any questions or comments, concerns? I know we'll talk about the boiler when Dave gets to it.
Thanks for the thorough, as always.
Yeah, you make it very easy to understand. So appreciate that.
And I know Mitch, this is your first year running through this. So then we'll approve the full actual budget in October at the annual meeting. So this was preliminary. What I present in October is going to be a little bit different. It always is. We always have some staffing additions or some tractions or things happen. So that's where we're at.
Are you rolling your name with Dave or do you want to action?
Let's take the action of approving, if it is presented.
When ready, I'll take a motion on the preliminary budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget as presented.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Dave's information is under this same action item?
I think Caleb slid it there for us to review because we didn't have it right away, but we've got him listed as E.
Rob, you ready?
Yes.
All right. Next, we move into Nexus and School Perceptions's presentation of Long Range Comprehensive Planning Draft Survey.
Good evening, everyone. It's exciting to be back. I'm sure as Terry has mentioned to you, we've been working on a community survey you know, the last several weeks. And behind you is Scott Gerard from School Perceptions. He's one of their associates and one of their lead survey writers. And tonight, what we're looking to do is just review the overall survey. We do have a question that you'll see highlighted in yellow. When we get to that point, discussing a couple of options we have to discuss after we have the overall review tonight for some gym space as it relates to the question we want to pose to the community. So when you see the yellow, just know we'll be talking about that after. And Scott, if you wouldn't mind, if I missed anything, feel free to add to your introduction. Otherwise, feel free to share with the board and the community here the survey.
Thank you very much, Rob. Can you all hear me?
Can you hear you? We're just going to turn it up a little bit.
Okay. I think, let me know when you're ready to go.
Keep talking, Scott.
All right, how's this sound now? All right, how's this sound now?
Now, it's coming up here.
Just give me a second, we will...
Absolutely. Take your time.
On that 100%, well, it's coming out here, to your point. All right, you're gonna have to yell, buddy.
Okay. My throat a little bit. How does this sound? Loud enough?
You're still soft, bud.
Give us a second, we're trying to, we're adapting a little bit.
Oh, you've got your HDMI in. Try it again.
Nope.
Default speaker changed.
To...
Change the audio source on there, Jim, on the computer.
Change the audio?
Yeah, if you're plugging that in.
Where should I change it?
So you go to Settings?
On the here, here?
On your computer.
Computer. Plug that in, plug that in, Jim.
There you go. Go. Go to Settings and then Sound.
Hardware and Sound. Down, a little bit.
Sound.
Change this.
And then, Jim.
And then I'll let you change it.
Yep, that one.
All right, which one? Hey, Scott, let's hear you. Nope.
I don't use PC's.
Oh, yeah. I know, that looks different on there, obviously, than I, too. If he's on an HDMI, though, he should be coming through.
Right.
Is there, yeah, is there a choice to choose that one? Hail, that sounds like it. Sounds weird, something over there. Little talk.
Scott, talk, please. He's still on this one.
I don't, we'll change it for him. I'll do it.
Is it working yet? Like we might be there?
You know, but no.
I wish I were.
Hit okay.
Can you hit okay?
Okay, Scott, talk again, please.
Yeah, how does this sound?
So, we'll listen. We just can't get you to come out of the TV and you're coming out of the computer instead.
Is there a setting that you zoom on the audio settings at all? I know I have to change my output sometimes there.
That's a good question.
When I close the session.
Hey, Will? Now try it.
How about now?
Nice work. Sounded great.
All right, so we're set?
Yes.
We are.
Awesome, all right. Well, thank you all for having me tonight. As Rob said, my name's Scott Gerard. I'm a project manager at School Perceptions. One of the folks lucky enough to be working on your survey here. So tonight, the goal is really to go through the survey draft, help you understand the approach we're taking, the questions that are being asked, the information presented, and in turn, what data you're gonna get back later this fall. So without further ado, I will share the document. And now, is everyone seeing the survey?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. So here on page one, we have what we refer to as our opening letter. And so the goal here is really to outline, big picture, the things that your community members are going to be seeing in the survey, get them sort of broad understanding of the problems you are looking to address, and maybe some of the potential solutions. And so again, big picture here, we want to draw people in without making them turn away because it's too many words. So, we say, "Dear families and community members, the Three Lakes School District needs your input to prioritize potential building projects. Many major building systems, such as electrical, plumbing, and heating ventilation, are reaching the end of their service life. We also need to improve school safety and security. To begin the planning process, the district hired Nexus Solutions to evaluate the condition of each school. The cost of all of the potential projects would exceed $45 million. Then we explain, "We realize doing all of this work at that number is not realistic at one time. Therefore, the board will establish a long-term plan based on the community's priorities and willingness to support the projects financially." So we've sort of teed up some of the problems that the district's hoping to address, acknowledged the cost of all of the challenges that need addressing, and laid out what this survey is going to do, which is help the board establish a long-term plan based on the community's priorities and willingness to support the projects financially. We remind folks their feedback will be kept confidential as all survey data is returned to School Perceptions, an independent education research firm. This box here in the middle explains how folks can take the survey. They can either go online to a website, and in this box, they'll have a uniquely printed code that they can enter there. Or they can fill it out, you know, if they want to sit at their table and fill it out with a paper and pen. They can fill out the survey and mail it to us, and we will enter that data. We have the survey deadline here. And then this is sort of just some background information on more if they need a different language or other needs to contact the district office. We close with a little thank you from the district administrator about the community and what it means to serve here. From that front page, now we move a little bit to a little bit of background information. So first, we start with the financial background. As you were just hearing during your budget, Three Lakes School District's share of local property taxes is calculated using a mill rate. This rate has dropped by more than 25% over the past six years. We are now below most school districts in our area and athletic conference. In addition, unlike most school districts, Three Lakes is debt-free. And then we have a handy graph to visually represent some of what was in there, showing how you compare on mill rate to some of the districts in your area and your conference.
By the way, Scott, if you all have questions along the way, please ask. Love to answer them along the way. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, please, don't hesitate to ask anything. I can't see you, though, so definitely, you know, don't hesitate to interrupt me if you do have something. So from the financial background, then we move into the challenges and potential projects. We've got a couple pages here where the following pages explain projects identified that could be completed now. Oh, that should be, could be, sorry. Could be completed now or in the future. And then right here, we have the scale that we're gonna ask folks to use. And so we've got a high, medium, and low scale, in which high means someone thinks that a project should be addressed immediately in this referendum. A medium, which means important but addressed in the future. And then a low, which means not a priority right now. And when we're giving you your results, we'll use that scale to help figure out what your community said were the highest priorities of the projects we're about to go through. So on each page, we've got...
Scott, can you hold on a second?
Yep.
I mean, Terry, this, so with what that high is saying right now, it says, "In this referendum," making it sound like we are, like, we are going forward with it. Do we want that to feel that way?
No, we'll change it.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Yeah, I can adjust that language, thank you for that. Would you prefer just to say "address immediately" be the thing?
Or do you want to say "any potential referendum"?
I would say "potential referendum."
Okay. Okay, yep, I will make that adjustment. I'm just gonna make a note for myself here. For some reason, the box isn't letting me edit it live, so... All right. I will edit that after we're done here. So then we get into the projects. And so we've broken these down into different buckets. And so as you can see, this first bucket, Safety and Security, and it would apply to both schools with an estimated cost of $3.2 million. We explain in a few bullet points about some of the aspects of the project. So Safety and Security would create more secure entrances to better monitor and control visitor access, replace the building card access system, update security cameras, add fire protection where needed, and add an emergency generator. And then we ask, "What priority would you place on the Safety/Security project?" And again, we have that high, medium, low scale. The next bucket is Mechanical and Electrical Systems, again, at both schools. Estimated cost there is $9.8 million. As you can see, the list of things includes replacing a boiler and pumps with more reliable units, heating and dehumidification controls and equipment that is 30 years old, air handling and ventilation system components that are 68 years old, corroded piping that is 68 years old, some electrical surge protection, and improving the dust collection system in the woods lab. Again, same scale here that we'll use for all of the buckets. Then we ask about the building interior, which again is at both schools with an estimated cost of $1.1 million. That includes things like replacing flooring and ceiling tiles, repairing and painting walls, upgrading the lighting and replacing the stage flooring in the auditorium, and remodeling junior high restrooms, academic breakout room, and storage area. We have a space for comments, questions, suggestions, in case folks want to write out some feedback there. And again, I'll adjust all of these boxes, so don't worry about that. We'll change all of them with that same language up here. But then, on the next page, we get into our next set of buckets. So again, we've got the both schools, the building exterior in sight with an estimated cost of $1.4 million. Project would include things like replacing skylights and wood windows, repairing cracked and crumbling parking lots and sidewalks, repairing the brick exterior, improving stormwater management signage, repairing the sinkhole outside of the middle and high school library, and adding a canopy to the high school entry. Then we get into some specific building projects. So at Sugar Camp, the classrooms and sport areas project with an estimated cost of $1.6 million. This project would remodel the special education area, upgrade the STEM lab and conference room, remodel the kindergarten restroom, and add a four-year-old kindergarten classroom with an age-appropriate restroom. At the Three Lakes Campus, we have a fitness center project with an estimated cost of $1.5 million. We explain here a little bit of the background of the challenges with the current fitness and weight room area. So it lacks adequate ventilation and is too small to meet demand. An updated facility would allow for things like additional equipment, improved security, and increased access for students and community members. And then we go back with a couple bullet points to summarize what work would be done. And again, at the bottom of this page, space for comments, questions, and suggestions. Our final page of projects, we've got another Sugar Camp project with the dedicated cafeteria slash gym. And now this is where there's a highlighted portion that I'll mention in a second. So the Sugar Camp Elementary does not have a dedicated cafeteria. We, again, are explaining the background of the problem. So lunch is served in the gym. This requires staff to set up and take down tables daily, creating scheduling challenges for physical education classes. And we explain, "On this one, it's a little different. There are two options to solve this problem. We could build a dedicated cafeteria with a cost of $1.9 million, or we could build a gym, which would be available for school and community use on evening and in weekends." So what we ask here is both the preference of which option should the district pursue, and then that same priority, or if the district were to pursue this solution, is it a high, medium, or low priority to pursue? What we're gonna need from the board here is a decision on whether you want to include a one-court gym or a two-court gym as the potential second solution here. One of them has a cost of $6.9 million, one has a cost of $5 million. But that is something we'll want to have the board pick for the community's decision.
And we'll talk about that. That's the item that we'll talk about after.
So do you want us to talk about concerns over language when he's going through at this point?
Please.
Okay. Scott, the one thing on this section that I'm, well, it's actually two things I'm concerned about. I guess when we look at how the language is structured as a response, we're seeing that building a gym is how we fix missing a dedicated cafeteria. There's nothing in option number two that indicates that that second gym would become a multipurpose slash cafeteria area? And then...
I don't think that second gym would. I think the intent would be to keep the existing gym as the cafeteria area.
Because right now, it's Sugar Camp.
Correct, but it morphs into a multipurpose. Like, there's nothing, right, explaining kind of what happens. It's, "We need a cafeteria, build a cafeteria or build a gym." Like, if I'm a community member, I'd be like, that doesn't...
Or that should say, "Build a gym and remodel cars."
Correct, that becomes a dedicated space for athletics and then a multi. The other thing, the second thing is nowhere in this section does it indicate that there's actually a 4K edition. So there's actual instructional space that's added in that project as well, that comes with both. Regardless if we do the two-court, the one-court, or the dedicated cafeteria, there's a dedicated 4K space just to the north of the gym project.
Is that separate from this up here?
No, that is the, that is the 4K space. And so, I mean, to your point, it's a little confusing. And so we can, Scott and I and Bill Foster, we can work together on clarifying that.
Or maybe those two pieces go together, right? Because in both, in both situations, that's a...
The 4K space is involved. Yep. So if you're okay with it, give us a shot at clarifying some of that, and we'll bring it back.
Yep. And so what I did do here is add a little language about repurpose the existing gym to try to make it more clear that that space would, that'd become the campus area.
But also...
Thank you very much for that feedback.
...as well. We have to be clear on all of that, like what benefit the district's getting. Go ahead, Scott.
Okay. So then we get to the outdoor athletics bucket at the Three Lakes Campus with an estimated cost of $2.4 million. This project would replace the track and goalposts, add a concessions building with restrooms, increase parking on the east lot, and add irrigation to improve the wearability of the grass. Now this, we are gonna figure out a way to note that it would not necessarily be needed if the artificial turf project right below were installed. And so we would include how much that would be, that would take out of that cost. So that final bucket, artificial turf at the Three Lakes Campus, estimated cost of $1.4 million. We explain the background that the condition of the football field is deteriorating and maintenance costs are increasing. Due to our weather and climate, its use is limited. Explain that the project would install artificial turf, creating a multi-use field for all of the different uses that it could be throughout the year, and it would decrease the annual field maintenance expenses. Again, a space for comments, questions, and suggestions at the bottom of this page. And then what we do is we move into the funding support question. And so here, at the top of this page, we explain we will use our community's input to determine how many projects, if any, can be completed at this time. First, we run back through the buckets that we've just laid out on previous pages and show the total cost of these projects. Then we say, "The following table shows the estimated annual tax impact for various referendum amounts. Financing assumes a multi-phase borrowing plan repaid over 20 years at an interest rate of 5.25%. We can adjust that based on what we hear from your financial advisor before the survey goes out. That's why we have that highlighted." So then what we have here is a table that shows the tax impact for a referendum of $10 million, $15 million, $20 million, and $25 million. And then we ask folks, "What referendum amount would you support, assuming the projects included were acceptable to you?" What we're able to do using this table is look at where we have a majority support for a referendum amount. So let's say enough folks would support a $20 million referendum for approval. We could then cross-reference that with the priorities from those previous pages and see how much we can get up to, how many projects we can fit under that level that your community is gonna be comfortable with. So we sort of see where those lines cross. And what we do here is if someone says they would support the $20 million option, we include them as also supporting the $10 and $15 million because folks tend to maintain their support as the price goes down. Another area for comments, questions, and suggestion. And then we get to overall satisfaction data. So we ask how the district is doing in a few different areas, and we're able to look at how that compares with... how that compares with our data across districts that use these surveys. We ask on a scale of zero to ten, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? And then the all-important respondent information. And so this is how we're able to break down and disaggregate some of the data and make sure that we're getting you an accurate election prediction. And so the key questions in that are, are you an employee of the district and do you have children attending the district? Because that allows us to look at the staff group, the parent group, and the non-parent, non-staff group, which is the biggest in your community. And we're able to weight those and use a formula to determine what a referendum could look like on the ballot. And then we thank them for participating. And this last page belongs mostly to the post office. We remind folks of the deadline, but addresses go here so that it arrives at every residence in your district. So I'd be happy to talk through questions.
Can you scroll up one page?
Yes.
Municipality in which you live. I mean, we have a lot of people who don't live here full-time. Do we want to say live slash?
So for what it's worth, if they have a, you know, a second home here, whatever the case is, they're not voters. I mean, certainly their input's important.
And we have this question about is your primary residence in the district? So that we can, again, disaggregate out the folks who won't. We still want to hear from the folks who won't be voting. Their opinions could matter in the community. Certainly, they can share their thoughts with others, but when we're looking at the election outcome, we want to disaggregate that.
Good question. What other questions might you have?
Do you typically get a good response from sending out a survey like this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say, oh, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, Scott. You're the expert.
Our average is in the mid-to-high teens, I would say. We feel comfortable with the results and that they're predictive once we surpass ten percent. But we often see fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, sometimes even into the twenties. So we do see pretty good response rates.
So this isn't going to just, this isn't going to all taxpayers. It is going to all the voter roll?
This goes to every residential mailbox you have in the district. Every taxpayer.
Okay, so it is taxpayers. It is not voting roll. Okay.
Yep.
Yep. And so it's not, this won't go to a business. And many times, for whatever reason, we don't include people, if it's a second home, for some reason. It's, they're just not part of the list. But they will get it, if they're a resident here, they will get a...
But they're still a taxpayer though.
But they don't vote. So sometimes, so sometimes we miss, we'll send it to every residential mailbox, but for some reason, occasionally we miss people who are, who don't live here. Now, they do have the option. They can contact the district and get a survey.
Sure.
And we'll try and do our best to make them aware of that opportunity.
Yeah, we will send a list of additional codes for folks to enter online as well as some additional paper copies to the district in case those requests come in.
For sure. Because we have a lot of people who are older. They don't want to mess with technology. And so we'll have those paper opportunities available for them. Something else that's notable is that you may have two or three adults living in a home. If you have more than one individual who wants to participate, they can. So if you have a husband and a wife who maybe think differently, they can request a separate, so it's not one per household, it's per individual as much as they choose to.
Can I see the language on the taxing after? So our, our community is so familiar with our current referendum cycle that this is going to be a new vocabulary for them. And I think it might, I'm wondering about how much more they need to explain to them that this isn't the type of referendum that they voted for prior. It's going to get confusing from that aspect. So if we're talking about, it would be a capital referendum. If you're starting to use that word here would be helpful and maybe a definition of what that is. Like, because they, we have not done that in a very long time here.
Well, that's a good point. So we can include something here, but we can also include a little something in the cover.
Yeah.
Because that's, people are gonna see that right away. And if we hit on that point briefly and then touch it again, so then they hear it twice.
Yep. Because we have just finished talking to them and educating them about non-recurring operational and grounded into, like, that training process has taken place. So now this coming is going to be confusing.
Could also put something here on page two, I think, explaining that this is a different type of referendum and what a capital, what capital referendum funds can be used for. We have a pretty useful, I think, one or two sentence description of that that we could put in here.
Good catch, by the way. Every community is different. You know, we want to make sure that we customize this to your needs and minimize any lack of clarity.
Yeah, even referring to the fact, I mean, that we just, that last cycle that you just voted in, it wouldn't hurt because, I mean, we just went through, like, a lot of stuff going out to community with mailers and flyers and everything, talking about that. So we, the process that I've taken with that is, like, talking to them educationally to keep building on the fact that this is gonna keep happening and happening, and this needs to be important, that this isn't confused with the next cycle of that.
Sure.
Because that's, that's what we're using these words, is that it's recurring.
This is not operational.
Right.
Exactly.
Not operational, and that it is not the same as what you voted for, you know, and really differentiating those somehow.
So we can certainly take a stab at it, and we'll share it again with Terry and... You guys can have a conversation, make sure it's helpful. If that's okay.
Oh, absolutely. Right. I think I've been very transparent all the way along that we have to be very cautious and purposeful in our language here.
Yes.
Because in no way do we want to shake their confidence. Our operational is critical to our existence.
Absolutely. No, you've been crystal.
I thought I had been.
Yes. Okay. What other questions do you all have?
Epic question. Could we look at the last page, Scott?
This one?
Okay, thank you. When we did the comprehensive town plan, it's really important to have that type of data so you can aggregate the responses when we're trying to get a handle on what our publics want. What does citizens want as far as a desired future condition for the school here? So with that, the question that asked, do you have children attending school? What comes to mind? Wonder if they expect to have children in the near future? Do we want to have something to capture that information?
You know, I think that's a hard, from a survey perspective. I don't know that we would use it in any way to disaggregate the data. My only concern is the more questions you ask, or the more personal questions you ask, the more someone might feel like their privacy is being invaded. And so it's a careful balance of the data you need to sort of make the results useful with making sure folks finish taking the survey. If that is important information that you all feel would be useful to your district, we could. I don't think we have generally put that in a survey that I'm aware of in recent years.
I see what you're saying from the potential value for the district. I think, that said, I've done lots of these, and we've never asked that. But if, you know, Terry, ultimately, the board thinks that there's some value there, then, you know, certainly we can have that conversation.
I don't, I guess I don't see, I mean, we're looking for, we're looking for the now, I think. Because, you know, if we're borrowing money for twenty years, somebody who might possibly have kids in the district in eighteen aren't gonna be filling this out, you know, they might be high schoolers right now. So anyways, I don't see it necessarily.
What other, are there any other questions on this? We've captured a bunch of wonderful notes. Thank you for your candor.
Why is junior high up in mechanical?
So there are, so your junior high, senior high, there's mechanical items that are captured?
Where was it? It was there. It's under buildings. Oh, never mind.
Wait. Junior high restroom, academic breakout.
Never mind. I thought, never mind, I'm good.
I know what you thought. Now I see.
Those words are blue?
Yeah.
Got it? Any other thoughts? All right, Scott, thank you.
Don't.
Thank you all.
Love a gyms?
We don't, well, we can do that separately.
Got it. Okay.
If that's okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
You too.
Bye.
All right, so let me get on this stuff. Thank you for your patience earlier. Obviously, I'm not a IT person. And so here's, so here is this question. And again, from a, the way it's laid out, from a verbiage standpoint, we'll certainly work through that, share with Terry and make sure that it's appropriate. And so we have this dedicated cafeteria. Let me show you all a print. Let me get back here. All right. So here is that base plan where we're looking at adding cafeteria. We have this 4K classroom space. We moved the cooler freezer from this general area over into the addition, and then this becomes boys' and girls' changing for this gym space. So this then would become a dedicated gym space with your new cafeteria. That essentially is that base option number one. The question is, do you prefer a single, single court? Still 4K, changing room, locker rooms? This becomes a multi-purpose gym where you'd still have lunch, what have you, in that space? Storage. And then the other option is two courts. And so then the difference between the two, off the top of my head, is the first one, I believe, is approximately five million, and this one is just shy of seven million.
But the separation, like, when we were talking earlier, the separation on the 4K piece is the one point six. That's completely separate and independent from the one point nine for the dedicated cafeteria and then the two larger, correct? Like, based on the survey language and the...
Yep.
So if we were to go with the single court, if we were to go with the single court and the 4K, it would be?
Four point nine plus one point.
Right.
We have indicated that the 4K space previously in long-range planning is a need.
That is a need.
A, like, an immediate priority.
Yep, as well as our special education.
This is like the good, better, best.
And that's exactly right. And so here's the, here's the good, which addresses your need bare bones, if you will.
Just for the cafeteria.
Correct. And then this becomes that gym space. And then this is better, single station. And again, like you've said, keep in mind, every option has that 4K classroom. Here we see the changing rooms, the interior storage, some renovation in the cafeteria, and then this remains a eating area, multi-purpose space.
But you haven't corrected that spot where you have the tables up and down if you're gonna use it as a gym? Are you gonna leave the tables down all the time then in that cafeteria area?
I would say it still has to be a multi-function, multi-purpose room.
So you're still, you're still picking the tables up and putting them down?
Depending.
Yeah, and keep in mind...
It's just abstract right now.
Right. And keep, to Terry's point, we're not in design yet. You know, whether you choose to leave tables down or you have them mobile, you can make that decision later. Right now, we're just looking at the square footage and general use of the space.
That changing locker room, it just, it looks like it's one room. Is that, is that really?
It's two.
Should there be a boys' and girls'? Okay.
Yeah. There should be an additional wall in there, another door. That's roughly six hundred and fifty square feet.
Let's make sure we get a wall in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't mean by the...
No, we won't. And then here's, here's the two. So from a, as far as just a question to the board, for an additional two million dollars, is having the additional court for volleyball, basketball, whether it's practices, if you guys are gonna have tournaments, whatever the case is, is that additional two million dollars something you want to test with your community? How do you think your community would react? Or do you think a single station would be more?
Mr. Reeve, do you have any thoughts?
I do.
Let's hear him.
Yes. He's told, he's told you before.
My opinion is the cafeteria, the top choice. We have a hundred and twenty kids. If we're talking about teaching and learning, there's five million dollars that we could spend in classrooms or a STEM lab or to bring in, like, almost like a wood shop. I would prefer to do that than to put two gyms in an elementary school that has one of the nicest elementary gyms in the area already. And if I were to put a gym somewhere, I would put it at the high school where the kids are practicing high school sports.
So, yeah.
That's my opinion.
Please keep in mind that the purpose of the survey is to simply test varying options. Not that you all will ultimately choose to move forward with any of that, but it's to say, is it a priority? And have that be part of your decision-making process. What are you thinking? So option one is this base option. And then the second would be either this, the singles or the double court?
Personally, I think that the double court is gonna be cramped. I don't think it's gonna be much better than what we currently have. I think, I think the single option gives you more free space that allows for other things to possibly be added or done, or... And it's two million dollars less.
For sure.
For a grade school. I think if we are giving the option to, for people to put their input on, I guess that would be my vote.
And keep in mind, too, the forty-five million dollars that was noted in the covered letter, that is the total in aggregate of your ten-year plan. So again, we're not looking at doing everything today. We're looking at what are those priorities today? And then continuing the conversation with your public over time and, as needed, continue to do more or less whatever, if you so choose later.
Yeah, I can, I can see, like, if you're gonna, if you want to give options to the voters, like cafeteria is an option, another bigger gym near you, a bigger space where that the whole gym would be multi-purpose. If you're gonna give people options, I can support that.
Is that confusing, it's confusing me now. We're at the top letter, you said forty-five million, and then the options at the bottom only go up to twenty-five million. How do you explain that?
That crossed my mind, too. Yeah. I think if we're, if we're asking about twenty-five point nine million in the survey, that should maybe be what we are referring to.
Sure.
Why are there two numbers? Can you just explain that again?
So the, the, we have a series of good, better, best options. In conversations with, you know, our administration stuff earlier on, we were able to take that overall and narrow it down some. And so historically, we've not, when we survey, we haven't gone to the community with, you know, here's the full bucket, and then basically the slot bucket and everything else, and say, here, you all tell us what you think. It's better to keep the survey more narrow, because otherwise there's survey fatigue. You get past eight pages and people are like... You get past eight pages and people are like, I've had, I've had too much. If you guys have ever had somebody call you at home and you give them a little time and they just keep talking and asking, it's like, until you hang up on them.
Can it be, so if you're referencing 45 million and saying, we're not even gonna ask you about 20 million of this, that should be explained somewhere. Those numbers are not adding up, like, we're saying we have 45 million, but we're only asking, you know, somewhere there needs to be.
We can add a sentence.
In that cover letter, perhaps, like some of this could be covered, just like a statement, like some of this could be covered in our regular budget, you know? Some, just to make it make sense, 'cause-
I think, I think you could just say something along the lines of, there's 45 million dollars worth of things that we need to do. We're looking at input for a select few items.
Yay, there you go. Something like that.
Are you an English major?
Only when I was failing calc two in college.
Story problem.
Think, think it will maybe change. Actually, I think that's calc three.
Calc three, oh my gosh.
Not for most of us.
So, so what I've heard from Josh so far is this option. What are the rest of you think versus the, the two-court option? Mitch, what do you think?
I'm gonna lean on the people that have gone to that school and have children in that school. I mean, I would, just as a voter, like to see the one gym, Sugar Camp's small. The gym is super nice, um, and I'd like to see that money put back in the classroom. So just me personally, I think the one gym would be big enough, but again, besides going through the building, I don't, my kids don't go there. I've never attended it. I don't know what the real needs are from inside that building. If I'm a, just a voter here in Three Lakes, then don't go over there.
But that matters.
It, it does matter. I'm just, but my opinion would be the one gym, just right, reading it quickly, what you've said, the, a new gym, great. Two courts in Sugar Camp seems excessive for, but-
I don't think it's necessarily the number of, i- if, if it comes down to it, I don't think it's the number of courts that is gonna concern people. I think it's the amount of, it's the price tag and the amount of space that we get out of it, because this is gonna be used, it's not gonna be used so much for tournaments. It's not gonna be used for, you know, big events. It is gonna be, you know, it's gonna be court space for the grade school stuff and gym space for gym class. And then it's gonna be overflow for, for others, sports for overflow for Three Lakes stuff. Um, you know, baseball practices and, you know, things of that nature, so.
For sure.
Can I ask a question? Can, I can't see the dimensions on there. Is, is that big enough that you could line it still, two going horizontal the other way across the main?
That's not- It wouldn't be regulation.
What's that?
I think it's, the difference is they just wouldn't be regulation size courts, like in the next one. But yes, you could have-
You could have two smaller.
Next one. So that, so one is 50 by 64. This one is forty-something by 60. Oh, I see, and then there's,
Yeah, it's-
So is that 40 by-
Is it 47 by 74?
Yeah, yeah.
So, as long as-
It's narrower, longer, yeah.
Know that it wouldn't be a regulation.
Correct.
But?
I mean, even, even from a, like a practice court or something, it wouldn't be big enough.
Okay, alright, that's, that's awesome.
I mean, you, you, you could put a half court, but you're not gonna do that.
Okay.
So, good question.
And I mean, the money overall, like you see the numbers, 20 million, 15 million, 10 million, I mean, just you going through that and me seeing those numbers, that's a lot of money. And then when you have it broken down in there with $80 a year, $6 a month, like that stuck out to me, right? I think most people are, 25 million seems like a ton of money and someone looks at the, okay, that's $80 a year, that's $6 a month. I, I can do that. I mean, that's immediately what hit me. So then the rest of the numbers, at least to me, don't seem as daunting when I see that broken down. So I think as long as that's highlighted, again, that's my interpretation of it and my view of it. That was super helpful and it made it seem very doable.
And that's per 100,000.
Yep, per 100,000. And, and I guess that's, I'll chime in again, 'cause I'm the operational referendum. I'm gonna protect that till I walk out of here and then, because I'll have grandkids and their kids. Um, we've gotta preserve that because very few people, and I can only speak to Sugar Camp, are living in a hundred thousand dollar property value. I have a little tiny country home on a little dirty duck lake and, you know, I'm looking at close to $400,000 of value for not, for something very modest. I'm just saying. And I know that my operational referendum money is real money and it's a lot more than what that would be. To me, it's doable. I have a very good income. I'm working. I mean, I understand all the ins and outs. To somebody on a very limited income, it could make a big difference, knowing that it's a difference, even that math is extremely important and that's why I think we have to be completely clear about that. But I, I do fall back on what all of you are saying, um, especially, you know, Josh, Alicia, and Todd, too. Because when I'm looking at the Sugar Camp needs in a space, and we know how challenged we've been for space for, for many, many years now, we do not wanna jeopardize losing instructional space because of something that might look like we're going excessive. And I know this is informational and we're, we're, we're testing the buckets, as you say, but I also know the public perception is, it can go from, well, they wanna find out to they're having a referendum to get two gyms in Sugar Camp, which is not what we're saying. But think about where it could go. Am I being too overly cautious?
No.
I just think we have to be.
You're right.
I wanna add some context to that, too, because if we don't pass our operational referendum, our levy goes from 9.8 million to 5.4 million if we don't pass an operational referendum. So to say that without an operational referendum, this district doesn't exist, I mean, that's pretty much where we're at. So I'm, I'm with Terry on preserve, we gotta preserve that.
Well, and keep in mind-
At all costs, but-
No, thank you. And keep in mind, too, that once we get the survey back and we have the community involved, um, ultimately, we'll get their feedback, which will be a nice series of inputs. The other thing, too, is that we can ask up to two quest, doubt questions per year. And so the focus on question one will be honoring the survey results, even being a little conservative and focusing on academics defer maintenance. If there are, hypothetically, let's say some of the sports things don't test as well, but there's some interest in going after something, that could be a question, too. I, I shared a little bit earlier, I believe, with Terry and Alicia. Just, International Falls just passed referendum there. 18 and a half million dollars. They had two questions. The first question honored what the survey results and what the task force came back and requested. But they also, the task force said, we need some help from an athletic standpoint. Their community, 55, the age of 55 and older is just under 60% of their population. And they have two major businesses. One just closed like two, three years ago. And it passed. So, keep, we're gonna honor your operational and we're gonna educate. And we're gonna make sure that when you all have the opportunity to choose to move forward or not, that we have a strategy, not only with the dollars and what the referendum's gonna look like, but what does that communication look like? Do you have your task force involved? You know, are they, are they supporting? 'Cause we don't wanna guess. Right? We don't wanna guess.
Is, do you ever do a pre-letter to that survey? 'Cause I almost feel like the survey's cold, like it's coming in cold and we're gonna all of a sudden start talking these numbers.
Totally surprising.
If there is a, an informational letter that goes out saying, you will receive a survey shortly about, you know, like something that's prepping, because I honestly feel like we're coming in cold here with some of this stuff, that a lot of the public's not gonna know any of this has happened.
Is that something that we put out, me?
We could, we could even do it like, um-
I've never, I've done dozens and dozens. I've never done that, but I mean, if, if that's something that you all think your community would appreciate that heads up, it'd have to be brief, and we don't wanna kill people with a ton of verbiage. But somehow introducing the process, the timeline, who all's gonna be of people specifically, but there's gonna be a task force. Maybe it's an opportunity to tell people, if you're interested, here's a, a link to an application or something. You know, 'cause we want their input. So ultimately, if, as a district, you all choose to do that, I mean, I'm all for communicating. The more communication, the better. Um, but we have to be succinct with what it is that we're saying, otherwise people wind it out. So you guys, I mean, don't have to decide tonight, but you all tell me what you wanna do and I'm happy to support you.
Do you do a thought process to take it out completely?
What's that?
Is your thought process to take the second option out completely?
I don't know. I-
We just, we just need to be very clear that this is not, these are not plans. And that was, I was just gonna ask Rob if you, if you could go up to the very first page of that survey again, if you have-
It's that letter. That's like where it's gotta be.
But couldn't we do that, I mean, couldn't we do like Terry Talks? Could we do, I mean, I don't mean to put it on you, but, but Facebook and like a thing in the newspaper, just something, it doesn't have to be a thing in the mail. I mean, how many people don't look at stuff in the mail? I mean, I don't know, I just, other media sources to explain prior to this going out. What is the purposes and a little to make it softer.
Yeah, it is that. I'm, I'm thinking along the lines, I used to work in circulation, so you know, like we did a lot of renewal notices and whatever, and it's a lot of different efforts that go out. So this is along that line in some respects where you're sending like an effort out and then a second effort. It's, it's close to that where you're giving that little bit of, that's my thought process anyway.
Sure.
Is that you're increasing your response actually by prepping the effort with that initial one and then getting rid, but yes, Stacy, it could, it could be in different forms, mail.
Sure.
Actually, in this case, it wouldn't hurt only because it's gonna follow the same format
Right.
when this thing comes. I'm just thinking about it right now, but I feel like it's gonna be cold just dropping a bunch of numbers and projects on people.
Sure. I mean, if, if you all think it's worth the effort to put a, a single page out that, by the way, here's, here's what's coming, this is why it's coming, here's how we got to this point. Something succinct, I mean, I, it, it can never hurt. Especially the timing with the task force. You know, we can include something, go here if you wanna apply. 'Cause then that's additional engagement, potentially. So.
I mean, it says it in bold letters. We realize doing all this work at one time is not realistic. I think at some level, we're enabling the community.
Yeah.
Right? Like, we, we can only enable them so much. They take the survey or they don't.
Right.
We either have a gym option or we don't.
Right.
I think the, the concern is though, my overall concern is protecting that operational to do this in a way that maintains people's trust in us. So we come back to that operational, that we don't break the trust anywhere.
Yeah, and I think where, you know, on the bottom half of page two, where you guys are looking at doing the description of capital versus operational, you know, I think, you know, and if that is clear enough and well-written enough, you know, that might, that might just do the trick.
Yep.
To at least separate the two.
Yep. And after the, these edits that we're talking about are done, of course, we're certainly gonna get it. You know, we're just, whatever guidance, direction, if you guys wanna do this preamble, if you will, to this, I, let me know how I can help, for sure.
Or maybe even at the very end, you know, putting a, putting a little paragraph again, saying, you know, just pushing. These are not, these are not planned projects. We are gathering your input into court, you know, this is informational only to gauge your input, you know?
Yep. 'Cause this is all part of that, I mean, I think to your point, this is all part of that 10-year planning. I mean, we're not, and we will say, every opportunity we get, this is not for a confirmed referendum. We may go to referendum, but that's all to be determined. So, no, I like that.
I just wanna reinforce when we did the town plan, doing that upfront work to help dispel people's assumptions about what the survey was all about, that paid, paid off in the long run. Because you get better participation in the survey itself, that people know, you know, what's this? Where's this going? How's it going to be used? That type of thing. So, so it paid in the long run and just, just, Josh, like you're saying, just a, a, a short piece that goes out to our publics.
That was all done.
Yeah. Yeah, so I wanted to reinforce that.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So back to the question at hand. I think we've seen the picture of the single gym versus two, so we're gonna go back down to this. And this question up here, we have this, go the dedicated cafeteria, that, that's in there. Uh, but as far as number two, are we, are we interested in testing one court or two courts? And I've heard from Josh, heard from Mitch, what do you think?
One court.
One court? Stacy?
One, for sure.
You good? Okay. All right. So we've got a ton of notes. We'll make some edits, we'll get that back to you, I anticipate by the end of the week. And, um, we'll go from there.
Last question.
Yep.
You've done these options, obviously, before, right? So, just generally speaking, is it positive results or do people like having those options? 'Cause we don't have it in any other bucket, right, except for that one. Could it be an option to just take that out?
Number two out?
And have the, build a dedicated cafeteria? And I'm not saying that, that, that would be my preference, but what I'm saying is do you get positive feedback when there's options for the community? 'Cause I guess I would look at it two ways. A person is either gonna look at that and say, why do we need a gym for a cafeteria space? Or, you know, they could look at it and be like, oh, well, let's go with the cheaper one. Right? Like, there's all kinds of frames of thought when people are reading that, but do we avoid that? But if there's positive feedback in the survey, in your company's world, about having options?
So what'll happen, especially with this one, what I find is that we're gonna get a ton of the comments, questions, suggestions. We're gonna get a ton of that. People are gonna, and they might ask the question, why are you even thinking about it? Especially people from Three Lakes that don't go to Sugar Camp. They might put down here, I mean, it's low priority, they're okay with the dedicated cafeteria potentially. And maybe they don't even fill that out, but they're gonna put information here that we can read.
And I think what that does, too, at, at least in my opinion, what that does is it kinda says that one of those two things are kind of needed. You know, as far as an option goes, and it kinda puts some priority, I guess, on the added space.
Yep.
Can you scroll up for a second? I just wanna see where that 4K room fell in, or if that should be added to build a dedicated cafeteria and 4K space or to build a gym with 4K and, or is that just completely separate?
That was, well, my confusion was at the beginning, because I think those things should, they're separate.
4K is instructional space.
Yeah, but we can do the 4K just on its own.
Yeah, it's true.
Two, so.
Oh, sorry. Right there in that area.
'Cause that's, incorrect my firm wrong, but I think I heard that 4K space, the special education space in that building is critical.
It is.
And so that's separate.
That is high need.
Yeah, yeah. What are you thinking we should?
I'm almost thinking that the options are, we just go with a 4K space, right? Like, we work it the way it is, 'cause it's working the way it is. It's just tables up and down, everything. I'm saying using the gym as a cafeteria. The 4K space is not working.
To give you an idea, right now, I had a, basically to get, not to get rid of the computer lab, but in order to do with our scheduled music and band, we're gonna be having basically a music class in our computer lab.
Which is the library.
Which is the li- off the library. Just the way our schedule works out, because we have to get choir teachers and band teachers back up to high school to do their classes here.
Then I think-
We are cramming all of our specials in two hours because of
If you were to say it works, right? If we get that 4K space, if you were to say it works like that, then our options could be, we just build, we don't need that additional cafeteria, 'cause we'll have ample space once that singular addition is. Right? Then we give the option of-
You're talking about it could be a future project, too.
Correct.
Right.
There's nothing to say that this can't come up down the road and we take it off the survey.
That, that's what we're trying to-
Well, and that's the purpose of this survey is to, from your community's perspective, is it a priority or not? And if it comes back where it's not even a thought, then we totally pull it out of the project. You know, then it becomes 10-year plan, but future.
In my opinion, the, the two highest needs would be an additional classroom, whether that's a 4K room or a new art room or whatever the room is, an additional classroom of some sort, and then a special ed type suite where
We have the therapies, yeah.
Where we're not in a little annex room off of our library. That's my two high priorities, I guess.
For sure. Okay. Good? Thank you all for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
You ready, Mr. Kirby?
I, I did have a question, it's a process question. Whenever you do a survey, you have a certain percentage of responses and non-responses. So if for some reason somebody doesn't respond to one of those questions, is the assumption that it doesn't matter, it's low? Or are you making that assumption?
So with the survey, as Scott mentioned when he was presenting, on average, it's about fifteen percent response rate. And so, the, the whole, and more often than not it happens, but we're looking for a snapshot of your community that represents your community from a demographic standpoint. And as long as we get that, you know, then we're able to make good determinations, you know, question by question as we disaggregate the detail.
So that benchmark is fifteen percent, roughly?
Roughly.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the maintenance update. Mr. Kirby?
Yes. Okay, first of all, to, to preface this, the system, the boilers that we have now will take us through this year. And so this is not, unless you guys decide. Okay, that's what we're ready to say for, and preparing it for next year, whatever, whatever we need. Two boilers out of the six that are down now, four are operational and they will carry us through the winter without any problems. Work that would be done if you decided to do it now would be work that wouldn't be done anyway in the future. And so it's, it's all part of building the new platform for, for the boilers in the area there. We're looking at, if we were gonna be replacing two of those boilers with one high-efficiency boiler. With that, we would be taking, with that boiler, we'd be taking out the system pumps, we'd be putting some new pumps in. And then also, there's a huge storage tank that's in the boiler room, that's probably ten feet in diameter and probably another ten feet tall. So, um, that used to house the preheated domestic hot water. When we went to school and we all showered during fighting class and everything else like that. Now, with the usage that is used now, we have two hundred, we have two hundred gallon water pumps that heat that water and we're more than able to stay active with everyone showering in the shower. But as that demand dropped, then that tank, part of this quote would be removing that tank for us to have some extra space. For, for taking those two boilers out, putting the other boiler in, that quote is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. With that, there is some focus on energy money that's available out of that. And that would end up being, uh, up to almost sixteen thousand dollars would be in rebates for, for the one boiler. If we held and we did the whole project, and that would be three boilers, taking everything all out the same. And replacing the pumps and in that, and also in that, we would, would be rewiring. Because in this, we've been through it and the boilers aren't on the, on the, right now, aren't on the emergency generator part. So right now, the pumps are only on there. So, just like we had power outage in the middle of winter, the pumps would stay to keep the water circulating so it wouldn't freeze as fast. But eventually, if we were down to weak or better, then we would probably be in trouble. But if, um, we did the whole project, that would be removing the six boilers and we'd be putting three boilers in. That came to a figure of three hundred and seventy thousand. And with a, with a focus on energy rebate of about forty-eight thousand. So it's roughly fifteen thousand per boiler. And then, 'cause I saw you doing the math. And, um, then there's also another, um, if we go with focus on, if we, if we do a pre-meeting with focus on energy, there's another, uh, forty-eight hundred dollars. So I think the pre-meeting with focus on energy would be worth it. I think, you know, so that would be one of those things that we could get, we could get pretty proof of that. I apologize for not getting this to you, I got it at two o'clock this afternoon and moved it, so. So if you have any questions, I can answer them if you like, or. But this is just, again, information for you guys to say, okay, yeah, no, we'll wait till next year to do it, or we'll wait, you know.
So right now, only, right now, four of six are operational?
Yeah.
How many does the school need to stay warm?
In the time I've been here, I've never had all, I've never had more than three running at a time.
Okay. Do you have ages on all six of them?
They're, I think they are, well, they were, they gotta be close between fifteen and twenty years.
All, all six of them?
Yeah.
Can you get forty-eight hundred in the rebate, even if you just do one boiler? Or do you have to do the whole?
Well, that, that's the whole thing, but we, we would, well.
Or would you get a third of it? Would you get a third of that if you?
If we do the one, if we do the one, we, we, we'll get fifteen plus, um, he's got it here. Let's get fifteen plus another thousand. And so another twenty-six, if we, if we do the pre-meeting with focus on energy for just the one boiler, it's sixteen hundred bucks.
Sure. Okay.
And so that would be sixteen, twenty-six, so seventeen, six. Out of that, a hundred and sixty-nine. And in that three, that all includes removing that tank, the, the, the extra, the holy tank that's in there.
One sixty, one sixty-six, great.
So what I included was what we got last week, this isn't updated, and then we got.
I was confused at first, too, at the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we just, these were, these were new numbers.
Okay, I didn't know if that was, if you were just talking about just the, the, the entire, if that was what you got at two o'clock today, or if it was all different.
Yeah, these two quotes I just captured.
Gotcha.
And then like I said, the, the information about focus on energy is, was, was new also, so. And then it's questionable to what's focus on energy gonna be next year if we pull off.
You're confident that they can go through this winter, no matter what happens? I mean, last winter was pretty mild, we could've gone through with one boiler, right? But like, what happens if we get to forty days with thirty below?
We'll be okay.
Are you having any problems finding parts for any of that?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. And they are available, so.
And will everything be repaired up and running before November first?
Yes.
You're positive?
On the, if we're staying with what we have, if we're, yes, they'll, they're coming in, uh, they're gonna do some work on one of the main system pumps.
Okay.
And then they'll, they'll take a look at, they'll do a run-through on the boilers.
What's, what's that cost gonna be approximately?
Uh, I think the boiler work is, um, I'm gonna say it's gonna be about two grand. And then adjusted each one, I think if we're gonna be another two.
It'd be kinda nice to spread it out rather than one big lump sum. And it would add, like you say, it can start to add, you guys add space to that area already.
We're gonna be about eight feet, eight, ten feet, and plus where the tank is, we're gonna get a huge area there.
Right.
If given the opportunity to make the suggestion today on what you think the best course of action would be, what would you say?
Boy, because, because being on the other side of this, when you come in to do that work, you know, it's a whole lot easier to, to come in and tear everything out and put it all back together again, you know? Then coming in and, okay, yeah, we're gonna tear this out, and then we're gonna have to, we'll work around it next time when we come to do the rest. You know? But to piecemeal it, if, if that works for all of us, that's fine. I mean, I'm not doing the work, so it's.
Caleb, what's your thought budget-wise?
Uh, it, it was my suggestion to do the split between the two years of budget half this year and budget half next year. If we can get through this year.
And then do it, and then do it all next year?
That's where that idea came from, that was mine. But we could certainly, I mean, you saw we have about a hundred thousand, so what if I got eighty-two budgeted? We, we got enough that we could do it all, or not all, we could do the one, the one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, you're just, you're just pushing it up a year rather than extra, kinda thing.
And, and honestly, when I'm looking at budgets, I like to look at, you know, a couple of years together. You know, it's, it's not, it's, it's hard when we're talking summer projects, but the fiscal year ends in the middle of summer.
Right.
I guess my, my bottom line is, we have to have heat, we have to be able to function. I need to be confident. Otherwise, Mr. Kirby, you're gonna be sitting with me answering the phone calls when it's cold and we're not able to function, because we have been talking about this for several years, that we, it's been on our long-range plan as we've discussed with Rob. Um, we've done well to get to where we're at last winter. And one way was a blessing, not for snowmobiling, but you know, for the heat and the wear and tear. But, um, I just wanna be very confident, and that's why I said, is that pump system going to be working? Are those seals working? Are we gonna be, when we have to turn that on, are we gonna be okay? That's what we need to know.
They assured me that they would have everything.
Okay.
Whatever we decide, they would either want to have it worked on by the time we came to heating season or else.
Yes, just do it.
Sorry. And, uh, this work is part of that ten-year plan, and if you choose to go to referendum, but you have the potential of saving three hundred and forty thousand dollars on your five-ten, 'cause it would be part of the referendum as an option.
The quotes that you received today, are they only good for thirty days as well?
Uh, they were good for.
That's what they usually have.
Yeah, and you wait a year for, and if there's any more response at next year.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just remarking, yeah, thirty days.
And you were told by our vendor that they could do this work sooner than later if we need it?
Yes, yes.
That was part of your conversation?
Yes, I said, we need to go to the board, talk to the board and let them make the decision whatever we're gonna do, then I will be back in. And I specifically said, if we chose this, could you do it? If we do this, could you do it? They said, yes, we can get rolling, make things happen. And not knowing what focus on energy is gonna do, I mean, that's a healthy chunk of change from the focus that we do.
Yeah.
They've been very good to us with the lighting projects and everything else, we've done very well with focus on energy.
Yeah, I don't think that's us going, I don't think that's going away. They've been doing that for a lot of years.
Yeah.
So with this repair that's gonna get done, is that getting the other two up and running? Is that what that's doing? That's just simply maintaining the four that are?
Yeah. And I could give some higher numbers for those if you wanted to. I could give higher numbers of those.
What are we gaining in efficiency on the new one versus the two?
It's, uh, they're actually pretty cool. They're, they're, we're gaining, at the lowest, it's eighty-seven percent efficient. At running at a hundred and eighty-degree water.
Where do you think we're at now?
We're in the low eighties. Which, you know, used to be where, you know, their sweet spot, their best efficiency is at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty-degree water, you know? They just love that area, that's where you're getting your ninety-plus efficiency really from, you know? And, but when you're, because that was a big question, was always, what's the sense of running a high-efficiency boiler right here in a hundred and eighty-degree water? Because it was never, you never got that efficiency out of it. So we threw a cast iron boiler in, which took care of that. But now with this system, the main turnout, it's, it's, it's eighty-seven percent, the lowest is eighty-seven percent.
Yeah.
Which is like, okay, that's pretty much.
I guess personally, I'm kinda at the point, if it's something that we're looking to do either this year or next year.
We're gonna recoup the costs, we're already going to pay thousands to do maintenance, and within the next couple of months, to get it good to go for November first. Why, what's the point of waiting? And the off-chance that it doesn't?
Well, we're still probably gonna pay the, we're still probably gonna pay the maintenance costs to keep the other four running, if I would guess, right?
Yeah.
So we're still gonna, still gonna eat that, but in the off-chance that two went down.
Then a lot of money we're gonna pay in an emergency, so it's gonna be way worse.
It's, it's better to have a planned event instead of.
Right. No, I, I don't think it's worth doing the entire thing, I think that's where we could, you know, if that could be, the other two could possibly wrap, be wrapped into a referendum item. Or we could do some as an expense and some as a capital.
Right, to do the other two would be less because we're, well, it, it, it's not gonna total, it may be close to that total of three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy.
Right.
Because with the first quote, we're still taking that tank out.
Right.
The laborers have taken that tank out.
Sure.
So.
I don't wanna mess with Caleb's budget, but I guess I'm kinda on the side of.
He's planning.
It's a ten-second change in Skybird, to make that eighty, whatever I budgeted, to a hundred and sixty-nine.
And like I said, you're just, you're just seeing some, some nice adds. Like you say, you get that big tank out, you get those. Like you say, you get that big tank out, you get those two boilers that aren't working, you get those out. You guys added space, the school gets added efficiency, it saves some costs, we get, we got the focus on energy stuff back. It's a third done, and then not everything is gonna be the same age, you could, you know, you can kinda stagger stuff a little bit too.
Good point. And the peace of mind factor.
And a peace of mind, and a peace of mind factor.
My world.
So, I I don't know, I guess, like I said, in in my opinion being, it's a planned thing that we've been talking about for a while, I guess I would. I would kinda vote to move. All this is discussion anyway, so.
What I would say, we've we've got a plan. We could set it up, Dave, knowing where our directive is, and we could bring it back next month as action. I think that that in retrospect would be fine because we've already talked it through.
And that's still within the thirty days?
Yeah.
Right.
Make arrangements with the company?
Call him, I'll call him tomorrow and say, hey.
Get us on the schedule.
We need to go through the right channels to get it.
Yeah.
And they oh, they verbally located.
Yeah. And and again, just for Rob to hear and everybody else, I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time and, you know, trying to put things together, piecemealing it, but I was pretty concerned this spring because I didn't know if we were gonna be able to get those parts and those old whackadoodle seals and stuff. Not my world, like I said, I want heat, functionality. And then that, if it's in the process that we can build onto it and it's in our long range plan, then we're not losing anything and it makes sense. And it's not wiping our budget totally out.
Yeah, the peace of mind is important.
Yeah. Okay, I think we have a good direction on that.
Yep, yes.
Thank you for the discussion, everybody, that's very important. Thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Rob, thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Drive safe.
Thank you.
Any other questions, follow up? Okay, we will move into seclusion and restraint report.
Yes, you should have received the report in your board packet. Um, so I'm just following up to report on the number of incidents of seclusion, seclusion and restraint from the previous school year. Um, so I'm reporting the following, there have been zero incidents of seclusion and restraint in the Three Lakes School District during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. The number of pupils who were involved in incidents of seclusion, seclusion and physical restraint for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year was zero. And the number of students with disabilities who were involved in incidents of seclusion and physical restraint for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year was zero. Any questions on that?
Do you happen to know how that compares?
We're way less than others.
Very rare.
You mean compared to other districts?
And this is.
Way less.
Yeah, and this is reported to state, this is, this is an important required report. But I just wanna put a plug in again for this district, the staff, the students, the parents, it's everybody, but it's that relationship and building of the culture. So you prevent those issues, as you know very well, before they reach that point.
And as we were talking about that earlier this morning, Alicia, that resonated with me, of building those relationships with the students and the staff have, they've all gone through NBCI training as a whole staff. And then over the years, I've just done it with um, the special ed staff and paraprofessionals. And then they've done like the verbal intervention strategies too. So preventing those things from escalating to these type of incidents.
I would also assume, based on this report, that there was no, zero arrests?
I don't know of any. I would agree, I would suggest you're right.
'Cause that has to be reported, that gets reported in this report as well.
And whatever you guys are doing as a, the parents, at least from my experience, um, are a big part of what leads up to that, so. Whatever you guys are doing behind the scenes are really spectacular.
Oh, good, thanks. They're an important part of our staff.
Absolutely. Thank you, Carrie.
Any questions, follow up? Okay, when ready, I will take a motion to approve seclusion and restraint as reported.
I'll make a motion to approve the seclusion and restraint report as presented.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, propose. Motion carries five-zero. Okay, and next we move into state and federal annual notice posting.
We just put this on every year, um, as it's a requirement, but just to remind the board and our public that all of our updated notices will be going on the district website and they will be published in our newspaper. That will be coming up in the next couple of weeks, Jen and I will work with Nikki on that. And it's, it doesn't change a lot, but it is a requirement, and we wanna make sure that they're accessible for people when they wanna find them.
Thank you. Next we go into school forest camp three update.
All right, I have a couple of points to share with you. Um, as you saw in your packet, the um, appeal was denied that we had made. So that is back on the docket, we do not have a court date as of yet. Uh, I had talked to our attorney Ron Stadler and they're, he and his team are preparing our response to the petitioners, so that is going to be coming. I asked him some questions, um, just to give you a little bit more of an update because I wanted to be clear myself. We do not have an option at this point to not pursue it. We are, and you're the law enforcement, but we are required to go forward, um, that is, that is actually where we are. My question to him was, you know, again, I guess I still have had a hard time comprehending why, if we're not building this former project, why it still continues in litigation. And he said to me, uh, just to make sure I share with you that it's part of the process, it's where we're, we are going. I had asked about, we don't care to be the um, district that is setting a precedent. And he said that that is not the case because even though it is maybe misunderstood in the public, um, what happens to our district, this is going to be for us. If we choose not to fight it, or if a decision is made against us and we don't appeal it, then it's standing that we would never be able to build on that property. That's not what we're saying right now, but that was one of our main concerns as to, we as a board, you as a board now can speak to now. But you were uncomfortable about saying one way or the other in the future. And he said, if this happens, it couldn't be a case that was binding for other districts throughout the state. Does that make sense to you, Alicia? He said, we have to either fight back or um, be subject to the order that Three Lakes can never build a trap range. And um, if we do keep going forward and we continue to lose, we have to decide what we want to do as far as, do we want to appeal?
On school district property.
Correct.
Not that we can't build a trap range.
Correct.
We can't have, build it on school property.
District property, that is right, good clarification.
What was the stay that's been?
Well, we had a.
They ordered the stay on the appeal.
Right.
Oh, the stay on the appeal, gotcha, okay.
So we're kinda back to where we were two months ago.
Yeah, okay. That legal letter was awful to read. It's very confusing.
Yeah. So that is my update of where we are at, um.
So we still can't do anything on the property? We can't? Do a driveway?
Yeah, are we allowed to, 'cause I mean, I thought that was a, I thought there was a stay there too, that we couldn't do any work on the property.
That I would have to, I should check with our attorney to eat, to make sure of that because at this point, I'm not sure if we're talking about wetlands, wetlands only, or if we're talking about an area that's not impacted by development, if it's not wetlands, those are two separate things. So I will clarify that.
Because if we continue to fight, we're just gonna stay in a holding pattern where we can't use the property. Um, but if we don't fight, then we're binding. On on a dictation on what we can do with school district property, regardless of state law.
Do you have a directive that you'd like to give me as far as seeking further information?
I would just like to know that based, based on the current order in place, is there anything to say that we can't go forward with our plan for the parking and for the trails and all the things that are impacted? Can can we be on the land for educational purposes when school starts? Next week, or is there gonna be further, further issue or any sort of liability that would apply to using the property for any, any reason?
I believe we can use our property, it's our property, we can walk on it, we can do educational study, we can do that, but it's the development of the property which is.
Still our property.
Just still our property, but that is.
And for the safety.
Stickling point.
Parking lots off the highway.
Mm-hmm, correct.
I just think something's gotta give at some point, like.
Yeah.
What are we doing in a holding pattern?
Mm-hmm. I will, I will reach out to him tomorrow.
I highly doubt that this is gonna be a huge priority on the docket, especially considering it's not scheduled and it's gone back and forth multiple times, so.
Correct.
I really like that we put positive happenings after this update every month.
'Cause we have some great positive happenings.
Anything else on that?
Someday it's gonna be positive.
Yes, it will.
Um, any, anything further on the school forest?
No, not tonight.
All right, we will move into district-related positive happenings, come on, Jen.
Oh, it's pressure. Let's see, well, I mean, it's still quiet, our sports have started. I don't have a whole lot to share, honestly, Todd?
Todd.
It's just, I mean, it's good to see everybody back in the building today. End of the day, there's kids coming in for practices, so it's kinda nice to get back into the flow, seeing people again, so it's usually really quiet.
Yes, Nikki, Nikki's got one.
I'm not talking.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to talk for Nikki, but Nikki gets a ton of credit for this. The, this is the first year that our district, and am I correct in saying this is the first year of the program, period? Um, we have participated in a direct admit program through the UW system. So basically, that allowed us to send all of our seniors' data to the UW system and they could be directly admitted to schools. There were ten schools that participated in that direct admit program. So seniors in the class received a notification if they were admitted and to which ones they were admitted to at the start of August? Right at the end of, end of July, start of August. So those, those students, should they choose to go to the UW system now, they just have to basically formally accept it. And there's a, but they don't have to go through that application process and there isn't even an application fee for them. So I think that's kind of exciting and and new thing that we have to report to you. Nikki's done a ton of work on it, so.
Absolutely, that's cool.
And that's all through, it worked through Infinite Campus, so involved a lot of training on her behalf and seeing it on seminars and webinars and all sorts of stuff, and there was a lot of back and forth because it was a new system that happened this year.
Thanks. Wow, that's cool.
We had our new staff, um, service, in-service training yesterday, and it was wonderful. We had a big group, administrators joined and um, our new teaching and paraprofessional staff and our new administrative assistant staff, and just really got to know each other. Um, did a tour of the district, both Three Lakes and Sugar Camp, which is really fun because, like Mitch mentioned, um, his wife Anne was one of them, and she doesn't know Sugar Camp, so she got to get familiar with that. And we had a great lunch together, and um, then there was more training in the afternoon pertaining to what was needed. And it was just, I thought it felt really good this morning when all staff came in, you could see an ease and already a sense of belonging and, you know, a lot of work went into it by Mr. Busco and, you know, various people. And I just was really pleased with it.
I got something to share, Caleb mentioned, uh, we bought a grinder this year for the floors and the trazel. To grind the floors of the school set of waxing them. Uh, what we've done, we've done a third of the building. Uh, and what we've done is taken the wax over the last twenty years down to the raw material and actually have polished the material. And so when you look at the junior high hall, that's not wax on there, that's the shine on the the trazel itself. And our hope is to do, next summer, we will do the rest of the building, hopefully. If if it goes well. Uh, but it is, um, we've been in contact, real big contact with the company that we purchased the equipment from and sending them pictures and videos and things that we're doing. Uh, one of the comments we got, um, from the owner of the company, he said, awesome. He said, you you should be very proud of yourself and your team. So the guys, we've got almost close to a hundred hours on the, on the grinder machine. Um, that's not including the hand equipment that the guys are doing and things like that, plus all the cleanup. Uh, so as you look at that floor, that's, um, and it was funny, it didn't click on me until I have silo stone countertops, which is a man-made granite. Um, and they shined as much as the first time we put them in, like twenty-five years ago. And then so it's the same thing, it's one of those things, we're putting the time into it now, but in the years to come, we're not gonna have to do, we're not gonna have to wax, we're not gonna have to strip, we're not gonna do that stuff, so. And then talking to Les Anderson, okay? He said, when the sixty-six school opened up, the main push was that they had, they put in they didn't, they spared no expense at putting floors that would last forever, and that was the trazel floors. And so it's gonna be exciting next year when we get done, we got them back to their initial state. That'll be cool, that'll be exciting. Yeah, if you get a chance to go down there, do it, and it's, it's pretty cool. And you think it would be as slippery as all get up and throw water on, and you're actually, your feet stick to it. But your shoes squeak a lot.
Oh, teachers will love that one.
Yeah, but so thank you for for letting us do that.
I guess, another, I guess, quick thing and big shout out to Mr. Kirby for this. Uh, football soccer field looks great. I mean, there is, there is an abundance of grass, it looks like it's leveled out, I mean, it looks, I mean, what a, what a diff. What a difference a year, you know, or a few months has made. So, just keep up, keep up the good work, a little bit more fertilizer, a little bit more.
This next year we can do the same thing again.
Yep, yeah, do it again, and I mean, it's, but what a world of difference.
We had the water wheels down for the last two weeks at Brawl, but it's back up and running, so.
Well, we've had plenty of rain, so.
But yeah, so thank you.
Anything else?
I don't know if you guys got a chance to see the new cobbies that were installed and share with me, but they look very nice.
Yes.
They're blue instead of red, and we got yellow cobbies now installed, so it matches the hallway and it looks sharp, so, looks like a whole new wing.
Rumor on the street was you were playing in sand and installing a gaga pit?
Yeah. Me, Charlie and Jack were out installing a gaga pit that the SEO purchased for us, I think that was.
It's a, it's a game, it's intense, so.
Was it yesterday?
Yeah. So you'll probably be hearing more things, you might be getting some phone calls from Todd about aggressive outdoor play.
Yep, maybe like four square times five.
Yeah, nice job.
It's a big hit, it's a big hit, I'll tell you, they love it.
Just text me, it's fine, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm sorry in advance.
I'm just, I'm sorry in advance. Anything else? All right, we'll move into WASB correspondence and updates.
I just had noticed, um, the other day that the regional meeting that, um, is going to be in October is actually scheduled for the same night as our normal school board meeting. So, uh, we can talk about that more next month, should you choose, but I wanted you to have that awareness. If we would want to choose it, uh, choose to move that, I, you know, there's the conflict there. Caleb, our annual meeting is what night?
October twen, uh, whatever the regular board meeting is in October.
On the sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so then we cannot move that.
We cannot move that.
So we will be doing our regional meeting, just, I was thinking in the, for some reason, the twenty-sixth, I was thinking it was separate, but we decided to move it together on purpose, okay? So this year, because of that, we will have to participate in the virtual meeting for the region, should we want to. And they do have an option for that too. So thank you for clarifying that. That piece as well.
Yeah, I was excited though that they finally moved it to a non-sports night.
Yes.
Cause that was always the thing.
That was a problem.
I don't wanna miss a kid's sport thing, so, but now it's on, geez.
We just can't win, can we? That's all I have from that today.
Okay. Next, I will take a motion. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. I was gonna say, Dylan.
I know.
The second's hound. Motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.